All right, well, with that, I guess we can get started. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you to the candidates, thanks to the attendees, all the people who submitted questions, and everybody who just decided to show up on this beautiful Tuesday afternoon. So the reason we are here, I mean, there are kind of two reasons. One is for students to get to understand the views of board members, and two, for board members to understand the views of the students that they're gonna be representing. So throughout this school year, we've come to see how important the school board really is with, you know, its oversight on reopening and shutting down our schools with, you know, the teachers that the district hires to like teach the students, with the oversight the board has on like student resource officers, the oversight on like curriculum. So we've learned that like the board is really important, and we've also learned that student voice is super important as well, because in, at the end of the day, like the largest stakeholders in this district are the students. So this forum is kind of designed to locate the overlap between the board members and the students, and just to make sure that there's like a very solid channel of communication and collaboration going on between, you know, those two groups. So hopefully, again, the students can understand where the board members are coming from, and the board member can hear what the, what the students think. So the format is going to be just going through a bunch of questions that are all students submitted. And we actually got like over thirty questions for this forum. And unfortunately, we only have like ninety-ish minutes, so we probably won't be able to answer all of the questions live here. But if we don't have time for all of the questions in this meeting, we're going to, Liza and I will send the remaining questions to the candidates, and hopefully they can answer them just in like a paragraph response. So hopefully, like either way, all of your questions will be answered. So with that, we can get into the rules and answering guidelines.
All right, so thanks, everyone, for coming. We have a structure just to keep everything going, so we're just gonna go over that real quick, so that everyone here can know that we've already sort of gone over it with the candidates. But in case, for those of you who just joined, we can go over it now. So Mate has control over who's being muted and unmuted. So if you'd like to talk, it's probably best to just keep your mic unmuted the entire time, so you don't have to request permission. That way, we can just make sure that people aren't butting in who are not candidates. For the questions, we have them broken down in structures into sections based on various sort of categories. So like DEI curriculum, you can see those all in the doc that we linked in the chat. For each question, a candidate, each candidate will have sixty seconds to answer the question. Either I or Mate will hold up a sign when you're fifteen seconds from the limit. It'll look like this, or Mate's version of the same thing. We'll ask the question directed at one candidate to make sure that every candidate, so that we don't stay in a stagnant order and instead have some variety in who's answering. But after that one candidate answers, then the rest of the candidates can go in whatever order they like to answer the question, or they cannot answer the question if they don't want to. And the question will be copied and pasted in the chat for your reference. Also, these rules are also on that document, if I talk too little too fast for you. Yeah, so we'll be keeping time, and we're gonna try to stick to a time limit. Yeah, so do you have any questions before we get started? All right. Okay, so I'm just gonna get started with some introductionary questions. So this first question, we're gonna direct it at Neelam, but everyone else, please feel free to answer it after she does. So the first question is just an overview. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Well, my name is Neelam. I have a thirty-year history here in Lake Oswego. First, as a sibling, my brother graduated from Lake Oswego High School. And now as a parent, my daughter is an eighth grader at LOJ, soon to go to LOHS. And I am a public health professional and a social worker. I work at the Oregon Health Authority, directing workforce and patient-centered primary care home programs. And I joined the school board about a year ago. And I'm pleased to be here. Thank you.
Okay, I'd be happy to go next. Thank you, Mate and Liza. Really appreciate your doing this today. And I want you to know it's been kind of a rough year, not getting to go to the high school concerts or plays or interview at Advanced Communication Skills. So it's nice to see people on screen today, and I recognize a number of names and faces. I am a current school board member. I'm running for another term. I've lived in the community since nineteen ninety-six in the Glenmore neighborhood. My daughter attended Hallinan, Waluga, and Lakewood High School, which gave me the opportunity to be fully immersed in all things Lake Oswego, including fundraising for the Lake Oswego Foundation. I have served on the Oregon School Boards Association Legislative Policy Committee, advocating for school districts and predictable school funding. And I currently represent Clackamas County on the Oregon School Boards Association Board of Directors. My day job for pay is Executive Director of the Lake Oswego Chamber of Commerce.
I'll pick it up from there. Also, Mate and Liza, thank you guys for putting us together. This is awesome. This is exactly what we expect from students in LO. My name is Brian Bills. I am a relatively recent transplant of nine years to Lake Oswego. I have three kids, two of which are in the LO School District. I have a son who is an eighth grader at LOJ, and will be a freshman next year. And I have a daughter who's a third grader at Forest Hills. I also have a four-year-old who's coming through the ranks, but has not yet made it there. My professional background is first in law. I practice legislative reform law, corporate finance, structured finance, sort of transactional law for a number of years, both domestically and internationally. I own an education company here in Lake Oswego called Academic or Aseological Education Services. And we have been working with students for almost thirteen years now, both from LO and other parts of the city, state, country, and world, on navigating their path through high school and through university, on their way to university or graduate school. My interest in joining the board largely comes from just a recognition that I think I have a background and skill set that is ripe for the challenges and times that the school board is entering into. I have a history for my time in LO, volunteering and participating in whatever ways were available to me, as a member of the DEI committee, SAC committee for LOJ, et cetera, et cetera. I'm happy for the opportunity, and I'm happy to be here today.
Okay, unmuted. Surprisingly, I don't have that much Zoom usage under my belt through this pandemic, so I'm still getting the hang of it. But hello, my name is Jeannie, and I, I don't know which faces to look at. I am from Lake Oswego. I graduated Lakewood in twenty fifteen, so not that long ago. But I also went to Palisades, when that used to exist, elementary school. And then I also went to Waluga Middle School, when that used to exist back in the day. And then I went to Lakewood High School. And then I went to Oregon State University after that, studied atmospheric science and actuarial science. And now I am managing data at Motor Health for now. And yeah, I liked what Mr. Bills had to say of why he is running. And I think mine would be that I always looked at my school experience in Lake Oswego really fondly. And I think, at least of my age, it's very common to say that they hated high school. That twenties are so much better. But honestly, I learned so much, so much at school. And I appreciated all my teachers. I loved all my teachers. Quite frankly, I still talk to a lot of my teachers. And it was just such a formative experience and something that I took with for the rest of my life. And I know that we have a lot of resources, and I know we have a lot of great people. And yeah, I thought I could contribute to that. So yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Okay, great. So the second question sort of going off of what you all have talked about, but maybe elaborating a little bit more. And I'll, I'll let Jeannie go first, since you had to go last, last time. So sorry. So the second question is, why do you want to be a school board member? And what changes are you hoping to bring to the LOSD school board?
Well, yeah, I guess, why did I want to be a school board member? I, yeah, I just really liked school. I really appreciated school. I really appreciated what everything like Oswego had done to the school system. And what changes am I hoping to bring to the LOSD school board? Well, I think that I probably have a lot of fresh ideas and experience, since I did go to all great schools here in Lake Oswego. I think I have insight on what it is like to be a student without being a student at the same time. I could, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty. I think I could kind of dip on that a little. So with that, I think I would focus a lot on the student experience. Like I just said, we are the largest stakeholder in this situation. And I am hoping to ask a lot of questions as well. You know, I don't know everything under the sun. I will admit to that. But I think a lot of colleagues and people in town are always willing to help and support. So yeah, I think I would focus more on the student experience and possibly updating everything just a little. You know, I think a lot of things that we still learn and run on is a little tiniest bit outdated. And I think it could use a refresh. So yeah, thank you.
All right, before we keep going, I have this little paper. It probably doesn't show up too clearly, but this, this is gonna be like, yeah, I'll just hold it up for like the sake of holding up. But it says fifteen seconds on it. So just like when you see me hold up this paper, like Liza has a paper too. Just please know that there are like fifteen seconds left and try to wrap it up then, because we've got a lot of great content to get through. So we want to make sure that, you know, we, we keep it at a steady pace. All right, now, Brian, would you, you already answered the first part of the question, but what changes are you hoping to bring to the LOSD school board?
Thanks, Mate. I don't know that I'm coming to the board with a list of changes that I'm hoping to effectuate. I think one of the unique circumstances that we have right now is we have a school board currently that has done a tremendous job of positioning itself to move towards the future. So instead of coming in with the idea of what do I want to change on the school board, I would rather offer that I'm hoping to be part of taking the the four pillars, the plans, a lot of the initiatives that have been envisioned and sort of developed and helping effectuate those. Obviously, you know, across the four pillars, respect to culture belonging, I think is big, as well as mental health.
All right, Liz or Neelam?
I'll go ahead. I have to say, we have a high-performing school board. And if you know anything about other school boards in the state of Oregon, ours functions extremely well. And the one thing the school board does is hire a superintendent. We hired an outstanding superintendent in Dr. De La Cruz, and that has taken us forward to put together this strategic plan. It's a five-year plan. I don't know that I would want a board that was going to come in and bring a lot of changes at this point, because it is a very well-thought-out plan and continues to make change. And what it is, is a living document that will allow evaluation and the ability to move forward in the four areas. We recognize we have an excellent school district, but these four areas in the strategic plan are things that we need to do better.
Great. So I, you know, just to give you a little bit more background on how I joined the board. I was appointed last June. I was selected out of twenty-four candidates when Senator Rob Wagner stepped down to step up in the state senate. I was honored to be chosen as the first person of color to serve on the school board. And, you know, I don't want to be the last by any means. I was really pleased to join, as Liz mentioned. You know, it was such a pivotal time in terms of the pandemic to bring my lived experience, my professional expertise as a public health professional, and to craft these, you know, four bold new strategic priorities. And, you know, we've accomplished quite a bit, but there's still so much to do. And those new priorities chart a bold new path forward. And I'm excited to continue to contribute to that.
Sounds good. Thank you, everyone, for those introductions. So now let's move to the meat of this event. We divided questions into a few different categories: DEI, access, sustainability, safety, and curriculum. We're gonna go category by category, spending about like fifteen minutes on each. So hopefully, there'll be at least like three questions for each category. And we're gonna start with the DEI or diversity, equity, inclusion category. So Liza just pasted that first question in this category into the chat, and I'll read it out loud. Remember, one minute per question. And Liz, if you'd like to answer first for this one, please feel free. Okay, the question is, how would you work to create an environment that protects all students, especially students of color and LGBTQIA+ students, and honor that parts of our education system are inherently roadblocks to creating an inclusive, learning environment?
Thank you, Mate. I think this is one of those questions where you need a team to do it, which means it's the board, it's the superintendent, it's everyone who is supervised by the superintendent, on down to every single member in the community. There is not a single answer to this. What it needs is constant evaluation. And I think we've gotten much better at doing surveys with students to see if we are addressing the things that need to be addressed. And we've become much more nimble in the last two or three years about addressing those and being intentional in our conversations and actually talking about things that haven't been necessarily talked about outrightly in the past. I think that is an evolution of the district. It will continue to evolve. I think we have created the environment. Now we have to enhance the environment.
So after the first person goes, the other, the remaining three can just feel free to like pop in whenever you'd like to answer.
So I would argue, just to piggyback on what Liz has said, and obviously, being a new candidate, not having sat on the board, my window into the plan and some of the things that have been done is not as, as large. But I think the two things that we have to focus on are transparency and accountability. And I think that that will carry over in response to a lot of the questions that have been put forth for today. I think we have to not run away from some of these uncomfortable conversations. And, you know, we have, as Liz said, we have to continue to assess and take stock of where we are. Where progress is being made. And, you know, make efforts to address more stubborn sticking points that aren't moving in the direction of the light.
I'll go ahead and go next. So I, for, for me in particular, to really create a culture of belonging, I think about this concept of creating culturally inclusive curriculum through windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors, you know, providing students an opportunity to learn in a way in which they can see themselves in a mirror. And then, you know, they have a window in which they can look into other people's experiences, and then a sliding glass door, so they can pass through to greater understanding. To me, that's a really critical part of creating that culture of belonging, creating safe and inclusive spaces and greater understanding.
Okay, my turn. Well, I think the biggest thing is that people don't know. Unfortunately, the world doesn't look like Lake Oswego. And I think that it might be a bit of a surprise whenever students graduate and move on that the world doesn't look like Lake Oswego. And I think the biggest thing is education and seeing what it is like out there for other people and how other people are like, whether that be LGBTQIA+ stories or other, I know, BIPOC stories. One of the main thing, I think, is we could teach. We have, you know, we have US history, we have European history, we have all these things, but we don't really have any other history. And I learned world history, and quite frankly, world history wasn't really world history. You know, with due respect. And it was all great, but there was absolutely no situation in which people learned about other types of people. So I think that if we can incorporate that, I think that will be really important. And I think that will help other students be seen. And I think to know that being different is okay and is good, so that it's not like a badge on your shirt if you're, you know, a person of color or if you're a part of the LGBTQIA. And I think that will probably make students really way more comfortable, and that's probably the number-one priority. Yes, we can evaluate. Yes, we can really take accountability in everything that we do. But I think the number-one priority would be shedding light on these situations and really educating that there's more, there's a lot more out there as well.
Sounds good. Onto the next question. Thank you for all your answers. If you were elected onto the school board, would you prioritize hiring a more diverse staff among the LOSD schools? Why or why not? If yes, how will you work to advocate for more counselors and teachers of color to be hired in the future and to sustain the staff members of color that are already hired in the district? And Brian, if you'd like to start with this question, feel free.
Sure. So categorically, yes. I mean, I absolutely think we need to increase the diversity of the faculty, staff, administration in the district for some very obvious reasons. Faculty and staff, if you are a student in the district, you look up for what the future holds, what the models are. If those models don't, if what you see when you look up does not resemble you or your experience or background, it just creates an impediment to to having a tangible connection with faculty, administration, and staff. So I think it's important for students. But I also think it's important to change the culture. So much of what we're gonna talk about today is gonna come back to the culture of our educational community, the culture of LOSD and the culture of Lake Oswego. And I think that to affect that culture, we have to start to, as Jeannie said, make sure the students recognize that the world, not just the world, but outside the bubble, looks very different than Lake Oswego does. So, you know, we have some positions of power, principals, as well as teachers and staff that are going to need to be filled. And I think we have to make aggressive efforts to recruit and then support qualified applicants from across the spectrum participating in the board.
So here's the deal. Lake Oswego School District has already prioritized that and has been working to recruit and hire a more diverse staff in every place across the board. So are all the other school districts in the state of Oregon. So what we have to work hardest at is when we can get someone here and that we are a great school district and a great fit for a diverse staff, we need to have a community that is welcoming to that staff. And that doesn't just mean the teaching community and the student community. That means the entire community of Lake Oswego, because our teachers and our staff are the fabric of our community. So as we welcome them and make them a part of the community, they will be feeling welcome and ready to stay at our schools. And it will make it easier to recruit additional. So it's all, it's a big, big line that we have to go through. And once we start getting people hired here, we need to keep them and do what we can to make them feel welcome.
I can go ahead and go next. I think we actually have made quite a bit of progress in this past year. We've doubled the number of diverse teaching, teachers in our school district, but there's still more work to be done. And this is an area of passion and expertise of mine. You know, I think you need to take a multi-punged approach. You need to invest in growing your own, probably through a metro-wide strategy, as well as, you know, having a really diverse recruitment pool, making sure that, you know, as Liz mentioned, that you do create that welcoming environment once they're onboard and they have supports and mentorship in place. And, you know, I think that our teachers of color are the best spokespeople. And, you know, thinking about diversity in terms of also ability and sexual orientation as well, so students can see themselves in the teachers that they have.
Thankfully, I think this is something that we all agree on. Yes, it is so important. And I think there's time and time again, so many studies on having diversity in teacher, students, and, you know, administrators, and how big of an impact that does have on the student. I think it was Malcolm Gladwell who said that, like, the difference between having, you know, a person of color as a teacher versus a white teacher on like a child of color, the probability of the child going to college is like day and night. And yeah, it does matter. And I think that they are, like Ms. Gupta was saying, that they are gonna be great spokespeople for Lake Oswego and our students. And I'm really glad to hear that Lake Oswego has been doing their best in that aspect. And yeah, and I think that they need to stay once they come. So they need to feel welcome and that they are part of the community. And that, again, they're not just like a badge, a token, fill-in-the-blank. You know, they really need to be supported and integrated into the community as best we can. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. This next question is going to be the last one in the DEI category. Again, with the questions that we don't have time for live in this meeting, we're hopefully going to have them answered just over like a Google Docs, like paragraph response or email or some other way. So if your question isn't asked live, Liza and I will do everything we can to make sure that it's answered in some other way. All right, so this next question, and Jeannie, you can go first. All right, so this next question, and Jenny, you can go first. For this one, it is transfer students into Lakewood often report feeling isolated or walled off from other students. What measures do you think are necessary to make Lakewood a more welcoming environment for new students, particularly socially?
I think, well, also, I was a new student. I moved here from Seoul, South Korea when I first moved to Lake Oswego. And I think one thing that helped tremendously for the rest of my life in Lake Oswego was that I was included. And I think that that's also teachable. And I think that we want smart students and we want smart schools. But I think we really want nice people and nice students and nice adults. And I think along with, you know, LGBTQIA plus students feeling comfortable and people of color feeling comfortable, I think we can also teach just generally compassion. And if that is taught, then we are way more able to see how a new student might feel. And I also, another thing would be having after-school activities really accessible. I think that transfer students might not always be easy and willing to get involved and things like that. So making that as easy as possible on the kids and the parents would help tremendously as well.
Okay, I'll go. It's, it's interesting that you cite Lakewood as, as a place that's walled off. Because I think over the years that I've been here, I've heard it from both, both schools, heard it throughout the district. It is not unusual in a community. And this isn't necessarily a board issue. It's the community of the school issue. And what we have in our district is an unusually high number of students who go K through 12. It's not a real transitory district. And we do find entry points at kindergarten, first grade, and again, at sixth grade and middle school, then again, at ninth grade. That doesn't mean there aren't people entering at all of those different levels. But what happens is there are groups of children who have common experiences. And it is part of the community to welcome people coming in. The foundation, when the foundation does welcome family events, that helps the parent clubs. And unfortunately, sometimes in these times, it's hard to bring the parents together and give them the opportunity. The other part is the neighborhood association. So it is all of the community that winds up welcoming new families and helping them fit in at each level.
I agree with that quite a bit, particularly with respect to the PTOs. I know my own experience on the Board of PTO before is pills. One of the challenges that we had was getting new families feeling invited, welcomed, and heard. And I think, you know, it's, it's a double-edged sword. Like on the one hand, families that are new to the environment are oftentimes maybe a little bit less vocal as they're feeling their way out and managing all the transition and moving to a new environment brings, not just for with respect to school, but all other aspects of their life. And I think the community, again, we come back to the responsibility of our community. We have to do a more aggressive job of reaching out and pulling people in. I think we tend to take the sentiment that while it's available, there's an opportunity. No one said you couldn't, so that's not on us. And I just think that that is short-sighted and doesn't in earnest try to address the need to increase feeling of inclusivity.
So for, for me, you know, my family, even though I have a 30-year history here, we moved back here about six years ago. One, my daughter was in elementary school. And I will say it was a really difficult experience for us coming in as a new family. So I can understand and empathize with that. I think one of the things that could potentially help, not only, you know, at the elementary school level, but at the middle and high school level, is having, you know, kind of a peer program, I think. You know, even though we have a lot of families, we have a lot of stability, we also have a lot of movement into the community as well. And so I think building those structures and those places that students can easily plug in and get involved and creating those opportunities to welcome new families is, is really critical.
I'm sorry, I don't want to break protocol, but I just had one last comment.
Just make it quick, please.
Sure. I think we need to distinguish between welcome and invite. Like oftentimes, we feel like we welcome. I think the onus is on us to invite and recruit.
All right, Liza, do you want to take us into the next section?
Great, so we're gonna move on to access. Just to make timing a little bit more clear, because I've always said this is something that we sort of mess up on. We'll do 15 seconds with this sign. And then, once your time is up, we're gonna just put our hand up so that you know that, you know, now's the time to wrap it up. We're pretty good on time, but just to, as a preventative measure. Okay, great. So moving on to access, our first question is directed at Neelam. But of course, everyone can feel free to answer afterwards. What will you do to make LSD accessible for students, faculty, and parents with disabilities?
That, that is a great question. You know, and I, I have been so impressed by the, the new Lakewood Middle School. That is a beautiful new building that, you know, has a very wonderful and inclusive design. But even though, you know, it is so beautiful, I know that people from S-PAC did walk it and note some issues. So, you know, I think we, we still have a lot to, to, you know, make sure that we're including. And so, you know, we can, we can learn lessons from the Lakewood Middle School build as we launch into the renovations and additional infrastructure improvements that the rest of our schools need. I think, you know, there's a lot of potential, you know, to, to universally design our buildings in a way that meet all students' needs. Making sure that, you know, lighting is natural. And so, you know, I, I'm, I'm really excited for the potential of that, you know, in future, future projects.
I think it's obviously important that we acknowledge and incorporate ADA guidelines and requirements. Unfortunately, that's, that's not enough. I think that is the minimum. So as Neelam suggested, I think it's important that we are consistently relying on groups like S-PAC in our independent review and assessment to identify areas in which access is not as, as easy as we would like it to be. But I also think that we need to think about the vendors that we partner with. And make sure that we are partnering with vendors that have a, in a, in an experience providing and highlighting that level of access, whether it be academic resource vendors, et cetera.
I'll go next. Yeah, physical disabilities, we, we definitely need to make sure that they can have the same access to everything that we do. And again, also make sure we check in on them and make sure that they do feel like they have access to everything that they need to have access to. And I think another thing is learning or mental disabilities, we really need to focus more on. I don't, obviously, it's to the discretion of the faculty or the student or the family if they want to disclose such information. But I think, you know, whether it comes with autism or learning disabilities, I think we can really work more with the students specifically. Or even let people know how to deal with things like that. I think especially something like autism, we are learning way more on. It's not a hard situation, it's a how situation. And I think, you know, shining more light on that as well would be really important.
And the Lake Oswego School District did something really bold a year, 18 months ago by getting an audit or evaluation of our student services. And that is something other districts have not done. We're now putting plans together for how to address special student service needs, which goes beyond just buildings. It means the programs, it means the teachers, it means educating our teachers and our staff to be able to, to work with students in a way that helps them thrive. So it is, again, it's not just what one school board member does, but it is a commitment to make sure that we're following up and evaluating whether, whether what we're doing is working. And when it's not working, being able to change quickly enough to find something else that will work, because every student need is different.
Awesome. And then our next question, actually, we'll have Liz, you can answer first. So Liz, mental health has been a nationwide struggle this year. How do you plan on addressing the increase in mental health struggles?
Again, it comes back to, it's not just me. We went for the levy a few years, or how many years ago, I can't remember. But one of the things that was two years ago was addressing mental health needs. And certainly, one of the things where Lake Oswego was ahead of it was a year or two later, the state started putting that into some of the funds that were being made available to school districts. We are, I think, intentional in working on mental health needs. It has not been a whole, whole child issue before. So the school district and the board all are committed to improving the mental health needs, which means hiring more counselors and looking at different ways you can work with the county for social services and whatever it takes to address these needs.
I, I can go next. And so I, I really feel strongly that, you know, in the reopening of schools, that we need to be attending to students' mental health needs to make sure that those are taken care of. Because until the, the issues that they've encountered during the past 14 months are addressed, they're not going to be ready to learn. I'm, I'm really excited about the new priority of the school board of increasing promoting health and resiliency and creating a trauma-informed environment. We've already implemented, you know, a exciting new social, emotional learning curriculum. A character strong, this year was supposed to be piloted, but, you know, now, this next year, we're going to be integrating it more. And as Liz mentioned, you know, we just need to, you know, continue to build on our existing mental health structure and increasing services and supports for all our students.
Yeah, I, again, obviously, I agree with the work that the board has done and the priorities that they've put in place to address this. And I think all those things are extremely important. I would just add that I think we also need to make sure that we are training teachers and station and staff at school to seek signs that maybe we didn't look for four years ago. I think there is a different dynamic that students are going to be facing as they come back from this period. Some are already back, some have opted to stay out for the bound for the year. And as kids show up, you know, with all hope in full force in the fall, I think there's going to be a higher onus on teachers to recognize signs that maybe it wasn't as important to look for or be aware of before.
Yeah, I agree with what everybody is saying. And I'm really happy with all the work the school board has done so far with addressing mental health needs of the students. And yes, especially after this pandemic, I think it will throw a whole new wrench and a whole new curve ball into students' lives. And yeah, I think having extra hands on deck for help and having a separate type of help, not counselors who also help you with school, but also your mental health. I think there really needs to be a distinction from that. I don't think that they should do both. I think that there should be one person who only addresses one type of thing on a student's life, if it's mental health or if it's classes. Yeah, so I think hiring someone who only addresses that one specific need will be really important. And yeah, also allowing teachers and training teachers to look for certain signs and things like that.
Okay, and then our final question of this segment is, what will you, and directed at Brian first. What will you do as a school board member to ensure that victims of sexual assault within LSD will have the resources that they need?
So I think this is a function of four criteria, educating, training, listening, and reporting. I think that, you know, as a, as a district, it's difficult to, to always identify students who have this need. But we have to be acute and listen for those signs, take reports of these things seriously, investigate them thoroughly, and be compassionate and not dismissive. And I think districts in the past around the country have, unfortunately, been through. But again, it goes to educating and making sure that the points of contact that students come to with these kinds of issues are well-trained, are receptive, and make an opening environment for students to share their stories and experiences.
All right, the partly, it kind of depends which way we're taking this question. So let's start with the education side. We have a sex education curriculum that helps educate our students, and frankly, our teachers, on conversations and how to communicate. And part of sexual assault has to do with communication and feeling the comfort to let someone know that you've been sexually assaulted and to find the help that you need. The school district, if it's a legal issue, that's a completely different thing if it's happened off-campus. But if we're talking about students who come and say, I need help, we have teachers and counselors and so many people who are learning all the different ways to help people who have been sexually assaulted. But most of all, it's being able to have the hard conversations that allow people to get the help that they need and to prevent it in the first place. I mean, this is the, the biggest thing that our education system can help with.
I, I can go next. I think, you know, the, the school district, you know, introduced the Great Body Shop curriculum that has some sexual education components incorporated into it. You know, I, I see this again falling squarely in the priority of promoting health and resiliency. One, one thing, I think there's so much potential that we can do. We could, you know, start, you know, peers, peer sex ed groups. We could, you know, there's, there, there's so much potential. You know, there's, there, there's so much potential, but you know, if an incident has happened, you know, we need to make sure. That students get the support and resources, um, that they need.
Um, and I'll go as well. And yes, I agree with everybody here and that. I think number one would be to be able to create an environment where someone. Is the most willing to speak up and open up. Um, and I think particularly that also comes. With having like someone specific who only does that one thing. Um, with regards to mental health or safety would be really important. I think it's really brave and really hard to speak up in the first place. So to have several different things, you know, intertwined would be hard and also to under. And the next step would be, yeah, teaching and sex ed among peers, you know, it's preventative. At that point, I think is really important too. We do a lot of no means no, but I think we also need to do. If you have to ask them multiple times, it's still a no and several other things. And I think at this point. Obviously, to a certain degree, but we cannot sugarcoat. Anything when it comes to this because it's gonna happen, you know, unfortunately, one way or another, and we really need to. Yeah, shed light on that.
Awesome. Now we will move on to our next section. So these next few questions are concerning sustainability. For the first question. Liza, you could just paste that into the chat. We can start with, um. We can start with Jeannie here. The question is going to be, what do you plan to do to make school more sustainable?
Uh, well, thank you for asking. I think sustainability, well, there are several different things that it comes down to would be waste and energy usage. So I'm sure Lakewood does as best as they can, but you know, make sure everything is an LED, make sure that everything. Um, gets turned off if they can and stays on if they have to. Another thing I think would be waste, um, make sure that we're not. Throwing away a lot of things that we don't have to throw away, or I think even with. Food and school lunches and things like that, making sure we're using reusable options. Um, and also, you know, supporting reusable options when students come to school as well, I mean, so that everybody feels like they have. Um, a say and take and an effort that they go towards sustainability.
Um, I, I can go next. I, I think I'm so excited about, um, sustainability as a, as a prong of the new strategic. Um, priorities, uh, you know, because we have really good infrastructure. We've got very active green teams. At each of the high schools, we've got a very, um, strong, um, uh, Lake Oswego Sustainability Network. Uh, and, you know, I, um, you know, I think there's so much potential to integrate it into the curriculum. Um, you know, the, the Lakewood Middle School is a shining example of a wonderful building, um, that, you know. Has, you know, it's been built with sustainability in mind and. Um, you know, I think we just need to do more of that in our facilities. And then I think, you know, part of our strategic, um, priorities also is to hire. Um, a teacher on special assignment, um, whose, whose focus is going to be, um, on sustainability. And so I'm, I'm, you know, excited to, um, really produce, you know, stewards. Um, of our, our generation, uh, of, of the next generation. And then, you know, I also think that, um. You know, I'm also the board liaison to, uh, the land acknowledgement committee, um, and, you know, we included. Made sure that the land acknowledgement includes, um, language, uh. Acknowledging that the first peoples who lived here were the original stewards of the land. So I, you know, I'm really excited about this priority.
I think this also, again, comes back to community at large, not just the school community. And I think the way we. Uh, take advantage of the, of the LOSD sustainability is by creating, as Neelam suggested. Stewards of the future. And I think this begins in middle and elementary school. Um, and I think we have to model it, right? It has to be. The status quo, um, so that we get to a point where, of course. You recycle, of course, you separate your waste, of course, you turn off lights, of course, you don't leave the water on while you're washing your hands. Um, you know, the other things that we're doing in terms of infrastructure improvements and the I call it the same, go. Things are great, but obviously important and necessary, but I think there's a real opportunity to affect the hearts and minds, if you will. Of the, uh, children in our community and make sustainability just the way we do it. Um, if we don't, uh, accomplish that, I think it's in this.
And when I was a parent club leader, I remember there was a time when there was a student green team at the high school, and then there was a time there wasn't, but there were parents who were. Recycling and now we have it in our strategic plan. And this is a completely different way of waiting for a volunteer to come forward to. Work on sustainability because it becomes part of our community. It is great that the school district has it in here. The city has sustainability in there. And I've got to tell you that the Chamber of Commerce is even working with the business community. So if this is important to our community. It's important to our schools. When we're all on board, it makes it a bigger reality and makes it part of. Just part of how we are generating those students of the future to be great civic leaders.
Thank you. Now moving on to the next question, and this will probably be the last question in sustainability because. The most popular section is going to be curriculum, so I want to make sure we get through a few more questions in that section. Uh, so this next question on sustainability is, do you plan to increase teaching on sustainability in school? If so, how? And Brian, you can start us off with this one.
Um, so, uh, I think just to piggyback on what I just said, absolutely, resounding yes. Um, I think it's imperative that we increase teaching on sustainability. Um, obviously, the big concern is, you know, anytime we want to add something that we're teaching to students, it's not already part of the curriculum. You, you have to find space for it, right? And so the risk is, what are we cutting to make this, this happen? And I think with sustainability, I think it goes back to, um, using the existing curriculum, curriculum. And pointing out opportunities for sustainability. And this is, uh, you know, in all fairness, um, going to fall on the shoulders of teachers. To identify those opportunities and make students aware of them. Um, but I also think in the activities that we do, I know at Forest Hills. When we have class parties, we always made a point to identify, uh, you know, we were recycling and using, you know. Things that can be reused whenever possible. And then I think teacher, staff, and faculty have to model this behavior. Um, and that's the biggest teaching that you can have, right? You teach by example.
I, I can go next. Um, I think what this past year has shown us, um, I read an interesting. Phrase that, you know, this has been the year of fire and ice. Um, you know, we opened the school year with, um. You know, wildfires out of control. We recently had an ice storm, so. We realized the importance of climate change, so I think we, you know, have a moral imperative to integrate it into the curriculum. Uh, and I, I, you know, I think I, I actually got to participate in, um. Reviewing, um, with a, with a small group, the recent, um, fifth grade curriculum around food waste. And, you know, it, I, it, it, um, I think it was just publicized in the last current and it was. You know, wonderful opportunity for students to look at their own practices and to, um. You know, to realize the impacts. So we just need to make sure that we are, you know, as Brian mentioned, integrating it. You know, I think there's so much, you could do it in science, you could do it in, um, language arts, you know, you can do it in so many different areas. And, you know, even to create a culture belonging, you can teach about the disparate impacts, you know, of, of climate change as well. So, um, you know, I, I think, you know, especially bringing on a TOSA, there's so much, um. Potential to really infuse our curriculum with meaningful sustainability. Um, and even, you know, as I mentioned, land acknowledgement, right? About the original stewards of our, our land.
And I have to say, every so often, we see the thing where, are you specifically teaching this course? Is there a sustainability course? And it doesn't have to be a single course. It needs to be part of. The things that are going on, whether it's in biology or it's in chemistry or it's in food science or it's in, so, you know, you're. Any of your social, um, social studies. What's going on in other countries? How are they working with those things? It is not just one course, uh, on sustainability. I really wanted you to ask the question about compost because I would love to see. Uh, little worm farms in each of these composting facilities.
Liz, we'll make sure we get answers for the compost questions and all the other ones, uh, after the meeting. Thank you for that, though. Um, alright, now, Liza, can you lead us on to the next section, please?
Oh, wait, I don't think I.
Sorry, sorry. I, I'm just trying to keep track of a lot of things.
No, no, it's okay. Uh, well, everybody had such good things to say, so, you know, they already said everything that really needed to be said. Um, I think sustainably, sustainability, one thing is an interesting thing and. Because one, one aspect, it's like morality and like caring for the future generations of humanity and all these things. And making that a lifestyle, you know, whether that's using water bottles and glasses rather than plastic as a school, as a community, as a club. And then there's another aspect of, I may be biased, but I studied atmospheric science and I think it's really cool. And I think people will want to know why it's happening, like, why are there so many fires? Like, why are storms increasing? Why are we having heat waves and why are we having cold fronts? Um, and I think that's really easy to explain. So that we don't just wa, you know, look around and ask why. And I think that's really important to teach in science classes as well. So if we can. Um, it will be on the shoulders of teachers, but it will be, it will explain a lot of things more than I think we realize.
Awesome. And with that, we will be moving on to the safety section. Um, so talking about various things about safety. Um, unfortunately, moving past the compost question, but our first question is, um, Dr. Neelam. Do you think that our schools are safe? Why are we not? And if not, how will you use your role to make them more safe?
Um, I. I think our schools are historically, um, a safe place, but it depends on. Um, your perspective on what safe means. Um, you know, for some students, it's. Not necessarily safe. Um, you know, if you're a student of color, if you're LGBT, um. QA plus, uh, you know, going to the bathroom might not be a safe experience for you. So, um. You know, I think we really need to work at creating safe and inclusive spaces. For each and every student. Um. And, you know, I think we, we've started that work and, you know, there, there's, um. Uh, more to do, especially as we're bringing students back into our school buildings.
I think you answered this question fairly, as Neelam suggested. The first thing you have to do is identify what is safety. In terms of physical safety, I think, um, for the majority of our students, our families and our community. You send your kid off to school in the morning and there's little concern that something physically harmful will happen to them. They are safe while they are in school. And that gives our community and our parents, uh, a significant amount of, of ease. I think that's true, but I also know. From, uh, personal and, and total experience that not every student feels safe in school. And, um, you know, safety is not, i- is not relegated to physical harm to the person of the student. There are a lot of things and it doesn't just come from peers. It also comes from a sense of being, you know, like you're being treated fairly. By administration or faculty or, um, that you have. Uh, your rights are respected and you're acknowledged. I think all of those things, particularly for, for youth. And, and if you get younger, uh, I think it's even more important, all of those things contribute to a sense of, do I feel safe? And I think we have some more to come on that.
Okay, um. So you put your child on the bus in the morning and you want to make sure that your, your bus driver has been well-trained. So that your child is safe on the bus and they get to school and there's a pandemic. So now we've gone through all the health safety protocols and. Right now, we think we've done everything that will keep them safe. Do we keep evaluating? Sure we do because we need to see what is the next. Safety issue that has to do with their health. Now, they are going to have lunch. We want to make sure that our nutrition program is good. So that they are eating safe food. When they came into the school, in the high school, did they have to have their backpack checked or have we put? The measures in so that intruders can't come in? Is the office checking them? We put those protocols in place. I think we are safe in that way right now. I think it depends who you are and how you feel safe and what it means to be safe. What we do, we work very closely to make sure that our buildings are safe and that our staff are trained. And we constantly have to go through that training to keep the safety level.
I really liked what Mr. Bills had to say about this as well, really like focusing on every aspect of safety. I think physically, we are fairly safe or in a fairly safe community and we're in a very fairly safe area. Um, I think, yeah, we just need to really listen to students and faculty and notice if anybody doesn't feel safe. And to respect that and accommodate that as much as we can, um, will be really important. And I think, like. A lot of people did hear like what their pronouns and even that I know can make a huge difference in someone's life. So. I am really grateful today as well. Thank you.
Awesome. And then this is our last question in this section, unfortunately, but is one that we got many, many times in many, many forms. Um, and we'll be asking this starting with Liz. Um, what is your opinion regarding SROs? Should they be allowed in schools? Why or why not?
And I'm the one who wants to talk a little bit more on what we call them and what, what their role is because the first time I was in. The high school and I saw, uh, officers in full regalia coming through, I kind of wondered what they were doing in the high school. And had the explanation from the principal that they were getting to know the community. And yet it seems when a fully decked out officer comes in, everybody's thinks there's. A reason to heighten your, your level of watching what's going on. And I also don't find it comforting to see. A, a police vehicle parked in front of a high school or wherever it is. What I really respect is the. The police community that we have here, they take great care of our kids, they take great care of our schools. But I am part of the listening to see how we can change the roles of SROs, maybe not even call them that. And continue to find out what it is we're trying to accomplish and work towards that goal.
I personally think, um, and, and I'm biased, I mean, I, I know, uh, for Brian, uh, since we, our family came to this school. Um, and I think, you know, to answer this question, I'm in the fortunate position of answering it for LOSD today. And in that snapshot of time, I think they are a great resource. I think they do, um, a good job of. Interfacing with students. Um, I know a lot of students that I coached or worked with over the years. Know them and have a positive perception of them. Unfortunately, it's not a snapshot in time, and I think. The biggest concern is that you don't always get the current, um, staffing that we have for SROs. And then, uh, the dynamic can change, the culture can change, the impact on students and the perception of the community can change. And those things are hard to control for. Um, so, you know, the district needs to continue to be involved in the selection. And termination process, if this system is going to. if this system is going to stay in place. Um, and I think, uh, with that, I think it has, it has a lot of valuable, valuable merit.
So I, I think this, um, this past year, um, you know, has really exposed, um, a lot in, um, our country, um, in our community. Um, and as a result, the, this, you know, the school board, um, did a series of listening sessions um, to gather, um, perspectives on, um, the current SRO program. Um, and it, you know, one of the things that came out really clearly is that the role of the SRO is not very clearly understood. Um, and as a result, the school board, um, established a task force, um, to, um, study options. Another, um, thing that came out clearly was that, um, you know, while there are a lot of positive perceptions about the SROs, there are also, um, students who have had, um, uh, difficult experiences and trauma. And so, you know, we need to take all of that into account in terms of redefining the role.
Um, yeah, I really like what Mrs. Gupta had to say about that as well. Personally, my opinion, no, I think it's scary. I think it makes you look around, try to find who is in trouble. I think, you know, and again, like as a student, I think that was the experience I had, you know, like, oh, who's smoking weed? What's going on? Like, what are they gonna do? Are they gonna sift their lockers? It's just a really chaotic energy, yeah, and especially the outfits, really chaotic, really disrupting. And again, I am definitely not sure what they're looking for or doing, you know? Um, and I think it is really trauma triggering as well, especially for certain people. So, yeah, maybe having that task first, figuring out what needs to be addressed if something was being addressed through SROs. Um, and I think taking like a very militaristic view and action on something that they are taking into consideration is also not a good idea and fairly traumatic. Again, these are students, are children, um, and I don't think, you know, a military-looking uniform officer is the problem solver to, yeah, the issues.
Right, thank you. And now we will be moving on to curriculum.
All right, this is a pretty hefty section. We'll probably only have time for like maybe three, two or three questions. Um, the first one is, what are your thoughts on the proposed ethnic studies course, uh, in the high schools? And do you think that this is a class that should be required for all high school students? If so, would you change graduation requirements to make room for it? Uh, for example, replacing ethnic studies with a current required course called like advanced communication skills or moving around graduation requirements in some other way? Um, and to begin, um, Neelam, you can start us off.
Sure, um, so that is the intention, to make it a mandatory course. Um, the challenge, you know, Mate, as you described, is, um, moving around courses and slotting it in. Um, I, um, you know, I am so impressed with, um, the thought and the, um, cur- the curriculum outline that, um, I saw. Uh, and, you know, I would, uh, um, you know, I think we've also undertaken, um, a review of our social studies curriculum as well, um, which is going to continue, um, to evolve, um, with new standards, um, by 2025. But I would also love to see, um, more content integrated throughout all our curriculum, like science. We should have role models, um, that are people of color as well.
And I, just to expand, uh, Neelam, we've had the discussions that ethnic studies is not just something you take one class in high school and that's it. It has to start from kindergarten on to be part of how we train our teachers and how we train them to teach and what is in the curriculum. And when we need to get supplemental materials, we get supplemental materials. I don't know that I would replace ACS. I think it's a unique class we have for our district. It does help the students in their communication skills, which is one of the most important skills you can have when you graduate. But you also need to have a very good handle on, uh, the things that are involved in ethnic studies to go forward. We've also had discussions whether or not to add, you know, another semester of math as, as, you know, there are lots of different things that you can talk about adding to our graduation requirements. Uh, it kind of depends how we work on our K through 12 curriculum with ethnic studies.
I absolutely, uh, think that it's, we should have this as a graduation requirement. And, you know, I think one of the first things that, uh, was pointed out, I think Neelam made the comment that it's a change, changing world, right? The world is getting smaller and the world does not largely reflect the socio-economic, uh, demographic, uh, LO. And, you know, if you, you go back to the point that Neelam made about mirrors, windows and sliding doors, you have to give students a, a reason, unfortunately sometime, to explore and understand the experiences in the past of others. It's not always intuitive, um, they don't always come from an environment in which that is highlighted or prized. And so I think making it a requirement is essential. Um, absolutely agree that it's not a one-term discipline either. It needs to be looked at and considered throughout the curriculum, should be started in elementary school. Um, and, you know, there are lots of ways to get around that. Um, we, you know, uh, in terms of what do we get rid of to allow it to happen? Um, but the way the world is today, I think it is increasingly important and we fail our students if we don't prepare them with that, that experience.
Um, I will spearhead this next. Um, yeah, I don't know about requirements. Um, again, I think that has to be like a longer discussion as well. Um, I definitely, I mean, I mentioned it earlier. If we are willing to add a different type of study in history, I would be all for it completely a hundred percent. Although I do hesitate calling it an ethnic study because I feel like that is saying like those types of people. You know, I think like even, I recognize that we have a world history, but maybe revising, you know, kind of going off of that rather than calling it something different or ethnic. Um, yeah, that was my two cents on it, but I think it's a hundred percent necessary and I think that will really help. Even, you know, we say racism and like Oswego a lot, you know, quite frankly, it's a buzzword frequently in like Oswego, but I think with exposure, it will just help a ton in not like specifying someone's race or gender or identity over, you know, it being different from everybody else and recognizing that there's a lot more to the world than European history is really, really important.
Sounds good. Before we move on, uh, do any of the candidates need to dip out like right at 5:30?
I don't.
Okay, sounds good. We might be going a little over, really enjoying these conversations. So I just want to make sure we, we get the most out of this. Uh, so we might go like 10, 15 minutes over, um, you know, the assumed, uh, 5:30 end time. All right, with that, we have another question in the curriculum category. Uh, Jeanne, you can start with this one. Uh, it is, do you believe that the school district is currently doing enough to educate students about fighting against racism? If not, what would you suggest that they should do?
Um, I don't want to say, again, I think, like we mentioned it previously, I don't think, it's not just a district. So I don't want to say the district is or is not doing, I think it's a collective effort. And I don't want to say anything is racist or not racist. I think everybody has good intentions, but I think it is really crucial to add different type of studies. Um, recognizing that we have so far had a very Eurocentric view on what we teach students and what we teach our children. And I noticed that tremendously and, you know, I don't want to use the word unsafe, but it happens a lot. And I was definitely recognized particularly for being Asian in the school as well. And just kind of wonder why are we so, kind of just trying to like break down that label? And I think it is just that we don't see a lot of people, we don't learn about lots of different type of things. Um, with that being said, I do think that like Oswego has all the resources that we need to do more and tackle more. And I think that like Oswego has the people who want to do more and tackle more. So I think with those two things, only magic can happen. So I'm really excited to see what like Oswego will continue to do in fighting against racism.
Um, I don't have a reservation in saying no. I don't think the district is doing enough in confronting racism, um, and teaching students to confront racism. The fact of the matter is, we have a very homogenous community. And I think as Liz pointed out earlier, when we were talking about inflection points with students, um, we have a pretty stable environment. A lot of the families that, uh, are here have been here, they grew up here, their parents went to schools here, more so than a lot of other communities. Uh, that community is homogenous, um, by nature. And so there's not a lot of opportunity for homegrown perceptions of the impact of racism. Um, you know, just walking around the elementary school when my son was a third grader and hearing the casual banter, um, of racially insensitive humor, which as a third grader, I don't, I don't impute animus to the child, right? That's a learned comment, that's a learned dialogue. Um, so I don't think we're doing enough and we're not doing enough because we are battling as a district, the dinner table at large. Um, and that is a huge, huge, huge opponent that we have to confront.
I have to keep coming back to, you know, the question is, is the school district doing enough to educate students about fighting against racism? And the schools can do a lot, the schools can educate the teachers, the teachers are educating the students. But if the parents aren't getting educated and the community isn't supporting what's going on, we really need this to be a complete community conversation because students need to be supported in what they learn, teachers need to be supported. But most of all, parents need to understand what it is their students are learning. And there are some parents that, uh, one of the things we've said in the, in the school district is that we need to teach people, we educate them, we teach them to learn, we teach them to unlearn and we teach them to learn again. And a lot of this is learning again for a lot of people. It doesn't matter whether you're five or you're 50 or you're 95.
So I, um, I am so impressed with, um, our current superintendent and the, um, intentionality she has brought. Um, and by unequivocally saying that, um, diversity, equity, inclusion and access work is the most important work we have to do as a school district. And I couldn't agree more. Um, you know, I have had, um, you know, my own family and, um, experiences, uh, with, um, racism, uh, you know, at the elementary school level, um, you know, and at the middle school level. And, you know, I think it does require a very multi-pronged approach. Um, you know, and I, um, I am an eternal optimist. Um, you know, I'm so excited that, you know, as a community, um, we read, um, the book Cast and had such wonderful conversations and dialogue. There is so much work to be done and, you know, we, we all have to do it together.
All right, last question of the curriculum section. Um, Liz, you can begin with this one. What is your input on keeping slash removing honors English classes at the high school level?
And I get to start because I've heard all the conversations on this for so many years and have seen the evolution of honors English from the, the time when you had to apply to get into honors English and then you could opt into honors English. There is a, I have to say, I think there's a place for honors English and I can also see the other side where every student should have the opportunity to have an honors English experience. Because when you are with students who really engage themselves in an English class, there's a whole population of students there who will engage differently with motivated students who love English and then with students who are not as motivated about English. Our district values honors programs and AP programs and things like that. So if we're listening to the community, we will probably come out with an honors program. But if we're listening to the science on teaching, then we will be looking at how we transition an honors English program.
So I, okay, sorry, Brian. So I, I, I really feel that, um, you know, the school, you know, people come to the school district largely because of its reputation. And so we need to continue to build on that. We need to make sure that while we're raising the floor, well, we're also raising the ceiling. Um, and people, you know, have high expectations. And I, I, um, you know, as a, as a parent of a middle school student, I am concerned about the preparation that my daughter has received and I'm, you know, uh, we'll see how, how, uh, she does in, in high school. But, you know, I, I do feel that, um, you know, there are things that could be done. Like we could eliminate, like Liz said, the entrance requirement for, for honors English. You know, we just have to make sure that we're maintaining, um, equally high standards as we've, um, set in other areas like math. Um, and, you know, bringing that over to, um, our language arts realm.
So, um, this is my version of the compost question. Um, I am a staunch, staunch advocate of keeping the honors English program. Um, I'm an education professional and I think that it is no different than the way we differentiate, um, talent, appetite and ability in so many other levels. I think one of the things as a district we do extremely well is we equalize the floor, right? We raise the floor, as Neelam said, um, looking to achieve equitable academic outcome. I think one of the areas that it's very easy to overlook is how we are servicing students who might be on the right side of the bell performance curve. Um, and, you know, having had numerous conversations, once I announced that I was running, uh, for the board about this issue in particular, some of the concerns are that the expectation is students in honors English who are independently motivated are going to be relied upon to teach other students and to bring them, uh, bring them along. The legal, uh, issue in and of itself, but I think it's a, it puts in, uh, it's a distraction for students, um, in English who, uh, want to operate in a higher level. I have so much more to say about it with all respect.
Um, my input would be keeping the honors English in the high school level. I like the idea of opting in. I think that English is far more than, you know, what an interpretive essay you can write on Hamlet. You know, I think that there's so much more to be learned from English classes and I think that's why we do have a separate honors English class. Um, however, I guess another thing I do kind of want to add to the discussion might be kind of grading scale. Um, I know personally, in I know personally in high school, particularly when we think about GPA a ton, I go to classes because I want to learn more, but I think realistically, I also want to think about GPA. So do I try to risk it and want to learn more and go to the honors English class? Or do I just want to get the A in the regular English class has been a legitimate question in my head previously. So I think keep the honors English class, perhaps making it an opt-in for that questionable grade and recognizing that most people, students who do go to honors do better in English. But with that being said, I think that also stops a lot of students from not participating worried about the GPA issue. So, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for answering that question, Deanie. And unfortunately, we're going to have to move on to wrapping it up since we are running out of time. We had a question about whether or not you would wanted homework and Mate and I were very excited about that one. So, but we will move on. So we just wanted to end up with talking about, you know, the collaboration again. So to plan this forum, we did reach out to student groups. We worked with student clubs in both high schools, including Equity Council, Green Team, Black Student Union, Asian American Pacific Island Student Unions, Gay Street Alliance, Student Demand Actions, Speech and Debate, Land of Maxa Kindness and ASB all contributed to help weight the questions for this event. Unfortunately, we did have to convince a lot of them so that we could make sure to hit the timeline limit. But we really appreciated their contributions and it really showed us a lot about their interest in the school board. And since some of you may be looking forward beyond the four next year, many of you will be. Our final question is have to do with the collaboration. So you have 90 seconds for this question. And we'll start with Brian. As a school board member, do you plan on collaborating with student groups? And if so, what actions will you take to strengthen the relationship between students and school board members?
Thank you. Absolutely. I'm sorry. Absolutely. I think it's imperative that we collaborate with students and students groups. You guys are the primary stakeholders, right? You are why we are all here trying to make LOSD a better, more enriching, effective place. I think we do a good job of that. The board does a good job of that now. We have two student reps on the board. But I think there are some things that can be done to increase the sense of participation and impact. I think one of the things that we often do, we being adults, when we listen to student voices, is we hear the voices and in our own heads, we acknowledge them. We think how bright and insightful they are. We applaud this is what our district is supposed to be producing and we kind of reflect happily. But I don't think we give it the same recognition outwardly that we should. In case in point, oftentimes I think students make suggestions, recommendations about policy or particular courses of action. And I don't know that we all, we as a leadership team, the board, in this particular case, always takes the effort to reach back out to the students and I will explain to them where their initiative went. Maybe why it wasn't acted upon, what the roadblocks were. I don't think we always take the opportunity to treat it as a teachable moment to go beyond the idea and the policy to talk about the logistics, the resource allocation, competing interests. And I think those things help students stay engaged, understand maybe why this particular initiative didn't move forward, but maintain an appetite to continue to try and improve their field.
I would say yes, we will continue to collaborate with students. When I started on the school board, I was asking the questions of how, how we were engaging students and how to bring them onto the board. And it took a few years, but we have student representatives on the board. And ironically, it sounds like we had student representatives on the board back in the seventies and eighties. So it becomes an intentional thing. I really appreciate it when the superintendent also has a student advisory council because it's important on a more regular basis than just a, a school board meeting to be hearing from students. It's important for school board members to be attending things that students do, to read the student newspaper, to see what the voices are. And that's really what being a school board member is, is being fully immersing yourself in what is going on in the school district, whether it's at junior high or high school or even elementary school. Most of the school board members read all of the newsletters that come out so that we know what's going on at each of the schools. Yes, student voice is very important. And I have to say, I was one of those student voices years and years ago in high school and in college. And the best thing that I learned after all that was that I planted a lot of seeds and a lot of the things that I started, because you're only in high school for four years or in college for four years. It says sometimes it takes more than four years to see how your seeds have grown.
So I, I, I will say that, you know, I've loved being on this school board and having two amazing, wonderful student representatives in Liza and Mate. Especially right now where there is so little opportunity for interaction. And so that, that is, you know, I firmly believe in the, I remember this amazing public health leader I used to work with told me many years ago about the instrumentality of youth. And I fully, fully believe that, you know, youth are at the center of a lot of change. And, you know, I am so impressed with both of you and so many of the students that I've, you know, had an opportunity to work with in the past year. And I would just love to, you know, create new opportunities, not only at the high school level, but also middle school and elementary school to, you know, hear and engage with student voice. You know, we have a few students that are involved in the land acknowledgement committee. We have students that are a part of the DEI committee. And so it's been such a valuable piece because as Brian mentioned, you are the ones living the day-to-day experience. So, you know, we need to make sure we are hearing from you and hearing your, your ideas and, and your voice.
Seconding everything that everybody has said, of course, yes. And I really liked Mr. Will's thing on having a response, I think, especially as younger adults, it gets really discouraging when you don't get a response. So I think that's a brilliant idea. And then of course, attending events as much as possible, but through the pandemic, if we can't, I think another good thing that we could utilize are apps and chats. I think having now voices accessible to everybody, not just people who are informed, is really necessary. I think that, you know, you might not have time to attend a school board meeting or you might have just not known how to participate. And having something that's some, well, now that we have, you know, access and technology to like neighborhood apps and things like that, that's going to become really important to hear everybody's voices that way as well.
Thank you for that. And so that's the last question that we have tonight. We want to thank everyone for coming. The, will, these four candidates will be up for election on May 15th. So if any of you are voting, hopefully this gave you some insight into some of their positions. And perhaps to change your opinion on them or did not. We will be putting a form into the chat to ask you a couple of questions, just for feedback, in case we do this in the future. We'd love if you'd answer it. Thank you so much for coming. Sorry, we didn't get to every question, but we really appreciate everyone. And we hope that this will be able to lead to future collaborations. And Liz, we will be sending out the questions. If you would like to answer them, you can, so that you can talk about composting. But yeah, thank you for coming. And please fill out the form because it'll be helpful for future. And also it'll give us, perhaps give future board members an insight into what was important to you in this forum so that you can, so that they can take that on if they do become members of the board in the future. So.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you guys, everyone. This was awesome. Appreciate it.